Praise God. We're here to worship Him. And because God overcame the world, Jesus is the Overcomer. And that's why we become Overcomers too. Let's sing about it. I heard an old, old story. How His Savior came from glory. How He gave us life, oh, Calvary, to save a wretch like me. I heard about His groaning, of His precious bloods atoning. Then I repented of my sin and won the victory. All together sing. Oh, victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He saved me and loved me with His redeeming blood. He loved me all, I feel Him, and all my love is due Him. He pushed me to victory beneath the cleansing blood. I heard about His healing on His cleansing harry really. How it made me late to do up again and cause the blind to see. And then I cried, dear Jesus, God, and healed my broken spirit. And somehow Jesus came and brought to me the victory. Oh, yes. Oh, victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He saved me and loved me with His redeeming blood. He loved me all, I feel Him, and all my love is due Him. He pushed me to victory beneath the cleansing blood. Come on, let's worship God and just clap our hands together. Why don't we do this? Come on. Hallelujah. Bible says we are more than conquerors. That is because Jesus conquered. He is the Overcomer. He overcame everything, every difficulties, every hardship. It is because of Him that we are more than conquerors and overcomers in Christ. Hallelujah. As all together sing. Let's go. Oh, victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He saved me and loved me with His redeeming blood. He loved me all, I feel Him, and all my love is due Him. He pushed me to victory beneath the cleansing blood. He pushed me to victory beneath the cleansing blood. Yes, it is. Hallelujah. Let's clap our hands to God. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah.
Praise God, everyone. At ah, napakabuti ng Panginoon dahil pinalaun niyang bawat isa na tayong magsama-sama sa gabing ito. At bilang pasimula, tayo pong lahat ay dumulog sa Panginoon at manalangin. Sige po, pikit po tayo at ating iko ang ating mga ulo at ah, lumako tayo sa Espirito ng Palangan. Panginoon, marami pong salamat sa gabing ito. Namuli, nagkatipunti po kami Panginoon sa gitna ng sitwasyon ng buong mundo, Lord. Salamat po Panginoon dahil ikaw po ang nabigay sa amin ng kalusugan na hanggang ngayon Panginoon kami malakas. Kami are able, Lord God, to even attend, Lord God, dito sa gawaing ito. Lord, ang aming dalang is our prayer, Lord God, that you anoint not only just the speaker, Panginoon, pati 'yung mga nakikinig. Kami pong mga taga pakinig. Bigyan po kami Panginoon ng bukas na puso, bukas na kaisipan. Na aming puso, Panginoon, ay mahilang tulad sa isang good soil. Na 'yung mapapakinggan naming Panginoon ay maitanim sa aming puso at itoy lumago at makita sa aming buhay. Na Panginoon, ang mga tao makikita Panginoon, hindi kami, kundi ikaw Panginoon ang makikita sa buhay namin. Na kami Panginoon ay maluwalhati ka namin amang na sa langit. Lord, it's our prayer also, Panginoon, 'yung mga hindi pa po nakakadating at di pa nakakadalo, papanalangin po namin Panginoon ikaw mag-ingat sa kanila at awaod Diyos na makahabol sila sa aming lesong Panginoon nasisimulan sa gabing ito. Lord, let your anointing upon each and every one of us. And we also remember, Panginoon, 'yung aming speaker. Let your anointing be upon him. 'Yung kanyang mga panalita, Panginoon, ay manggargaling sa'yo na ito Panginoon ay 'yung mensahe mo sa bawat isa sa amin. Panginoon, ikaw po ang maluwalhati sa bawat bahagi ng gawaing namin sa gabing ito. Ito po ang aming samo at dalangin sa pangalan ni Jesus. Amen. Amen.
Ang gandang gabi po sa inyong lahat, sa ating lahat. Our speaker for today is a very successful doctor, yet a very humble servant of God and of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Let's welcome our doctor, Pastor June Felix Domingo Jr. Alakpan po natin ating Panginoon.
Thank you, Kuya Roy. Thank you, Brother Jong. Ah, hindi pa po pastor, overseer lang po ng CCF. Ako po ay sobrang, ano ba sasabihin ko? Mixed emotion ba tawag dito? Kasi, I'm so excited to have all of you. I'm so blessed to have 190 attendees for tonight. But at the same time, nakakanerbyos pala magtalk sa Zoom na ganito karami. So, I'm so happy to see all of you. Alam niyo po, ah, noong nag-uusap po ang mga Council of Servants ng CCF Antipolo, we really would like to find ways to equip you, not to equip you. Especially po ngayong panahon ng pandemic. Hindi na po tayo nagkikitang madalas face to face. And kung minsan po, you are left to read your Bible on your own, no? Ah, every Sunday sa D Group, dun lang tayo nakakapag-meet at nakakapag-share ng learnings natin. So, we decided na mag-book study tayo and let's make it a habit every Wednesday ah, to meet together and ah, and share our time together in our book study. No, I think we have, Brother Jong, I think meron tayong mga newcomers. So, gusto ko lang i-explain na 'yung GLC, 'yung Global Leadership, ay isang ano po 'yan tool po ng CCF Antipolo, our church, to equip you with um, ah, basic knowledge of the Bible, of salvation, of the Gospel. So if you are interested po to deepen your knowledge of the Lord and His Word, sali po kayo sa GLC natin. And also, I'm excited na dun sa ating Mega D Group. Ah, Mega D, a D Group actually is a, is a group of people who, who come meet together on a regular basis so that they can learn about the Lord, share life experiences, and have changed lives. No, 'yung po 'yung ating discipleship group or D Group. And every end of the month, we all discipleship group meet in what we call a Mega D Group meeting. And our topic is very interesting po. 'Yung Spiritual Bootcamp, it talks about basic um, ah, things to do when you're a Christian, like how to read your Bible, how to study the Bible, how do you study it? And ang gusto naming gawin is we will combine the Roman book study sa matututunan ninyo sa how to read the Bible and how to study the Bible. I'll explain that to you a little bit later on. Sa last discipleship group meeting, we asked eh Paul, kung what book would you like us to study on? And ang winner po ay the Book of Romans. I think na lito po 'yung iba, akala nila pag-ibig 'yung pag-uusapan, "Romans"? Oy, tumawan namang tayo dyan. But actually, it is the book or the letter of Paul to the church um, in Rome, no, the Roman church. And um, ah, I am tasked to you, ah, for you this evening to introduce you to this very, very wonderful book ah, that God allowed us to have and to learn, no? And my topic for you this evening is an introduction to the Book of Romans, the power of the Gospel, the power of the Gospel. A little interesting facts po about the Book of Romans. It is the, the, the book in the New Testament that quotes the Old Testament the most, no? Kumbaga, ah, the writer of the book really ah, chose to connect what he knows about the Gospel and the Old Testament. In fact, he quoted ah, the Old Testament 57 times, 57 times. Alam niyo po, noong panahon noon, hindi namang po pwedeng e-mail, no? Hindi rin po pwede 'yung regular mail kat na may rompong eroplano na magpapalipad ng sulat ninyo sa Amerika Halimbawa o sa Europa. Noong unang panahon po, 'yung mail ay binipit-bit talaga ng tao para ipadala sa malalayang lugar. Kaya noon po, hindi po tinatanggap masyado 'yung mahahabang sulat. Imagine niyo naman kung sobrang, parang isang libro na 'yung sulat mo at ilang sulat 'yung bubuhatin noong tagapagdala ng sulat, no? Karaniwan po, ang mga sulat po noong panahon nila, mga 2,000 to 3,000 words. Do you know that the letter to the Romans is the longest letter from the ancient world? No? Around more than 7,000 words. And you know, pag tinitignan po ninyo at naiisip nating, grabe si Lord, no? Grabe si Lord na, na, na-preserve. Itong napakagandang sulat, no? Napreserve 'tong napakagandang sulat for all of us to get to know the Lord better. You know, when you read the Book of Romans, at ah, ang isa 'yan, no? So, pag nagbabasa po kayo ng Bible, have ball pen, sulatan po niyo 'yung Bible ninyo. Sulatan niyo po. Kung pwede niyo pong gawin, bilukan niyo nga ilan lahat ang sinabi ni Lord, 'yung ah, ni, ng, ng writer, 'yung salitang God, Christ, righteousness, law, sin, faith. Kasi um, the, the God was mentioned 153,000 times in the Book of Romans. Christ was mentioned 65,000 times. Righteousness, 60,000 times. Law, 72,000 times. Sin, 48, and faith, 40,000, 40 times. So, you can see here, kung saan nag-i-evolve itong usapan about the Book of Romans. Talks about God and Jesus Christ and righteousness and what is the relationship of law and faith and sin. You know, the Book of Romans has been shown to greatly change many lives. And for this evening, I hope when you decided to join our book study, no, that God will really work into your hearts to change you. Can you help me pray muna? No? Medyo nenerbis po ko eh. So, let's pray. Dear Lord God, we honor you, Lord. We give you thanks. We praise you for you are our God, a God that we worship, Lord. And Lord, as we see and read this wonderful book that was written, that teaches us about you, Lord, mas lalo po kaming at awe sa inyo, sa kabaitan ninyo, sa power ninyo, Lord, and the Lord Jesus Christ. Father, let me be your spokesman tonight. For tonight, Lord, may I speak your truth? And Lord, ang lagi ko po talagang hiling, hindi lang po mabago ang isipan, kundi mabago ang puso at mabago po ang buhay ng bawat isa na nandito ngayong gabi. Lord, we pray for the Christians in Afghanistan, Lord, who are really endangering their lives by staying to continue to share the Gospel. I remember Paul, Father, and how he also faced dangers in his life to give the glory to your Gospel. Lord, we also pray for everyone who's suffering from COVID, your relatives, your friends. Father, we pray that um, you protect them and heal them, Lord. And Father, may they, may we use this pandemic to give you glory, to use this time the best that we can to get to know you, just like this book study, Father. To all the aura and glory be yours, Father. In the name of your Son, whom we worship, the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. So when I said, "The Book of Romans has changed many lives", now a very great example is Augustine of Hippo. Now Augustine is a great theologian of the early church, no? He lived from 354 to 430. You know what? No, he, he was a great teacher. His mother was a Christian, but he was really fighting uh, against this faith, no, in his heart. Hindi mo siya nakikipagawa, but against this faith in his heart. He was actually embroiled in drinking, you know, girlfriends, relationships left and right. So, he was actually struggling with his life until one day, sabi dito sa kanyang ano, sa kanyang diary, no? "I heard a voice from a nearby house, no, chanting, 'Pick up and read!' I rushed back to the place where I had put down the Book of the Apostle, and in silence I read the first passage on which my eye landed." At ang nabasa po niya is Romans 13, and it says, "Don't participate in the darkness of wild parties and drunkenness, sexual promiscuity, immoral living, quarreling, jealousy. Instead, clothe yourself with the presence of the Lord Jesus Christ." And you know what, guys? Noong nabasa po niya ito, with the last words of this sentence, it was as if a light of relief from all anxiety flooded his heart, and he gave his heart to Jesus. And since then, he never looked back. And as I said, he is one of the greatest source of theology that we have from the early church. In 1483, no, there was a man named Martin Luther, and you know him. No, he started the Great Reformation. He is actually a monk. He was actually a monk. And he described himself this way, "If ever a monk could get into heaven by his monkery, it was me." No, I mean Martin Luther was really trying hard to be righteous in his life. And it was when he was reading the Book of Romans that he read the righteousness of God, no? He was actually angry. No, he said, he thought of it as something no one else could measure up. So napaka-unfair namang ni God. Nah, his righteousness is up here, and me, I'm a monk. I'm trying my best, but you know, I cannot really reach up to the level of God's righteousness. And that's why we people have to be punished. And he was reading Romans again and again and said, "Night and day, I pondered, I thought about this, I wrestled with God about this," until he read again Romans 1:17, "For in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith." And when he read that, he realized that the righteousness of God is that righteousness gotten from grace and mercy. And that our justification is not by being good, but because of our faith in the Lord Jesus Christ. And the passage of Paul became his gateway into heaven. So another great person, no? A great person, I mean, in the sense of spreading the Gospel, was John Wesley. Now when John Wesley, he was supposedly quote-unquote "a Christian", but he was not living a Christian life. When he was walking home one day, he heard some Christians having a book study on Romans, just like this. So sino po sa inyo, 'yung bago lang sa Christian walk or ngayon lang nakaattend dito, he, you are like John Wesley. So he was walking, may mga nagba-Bible study. So hindi pa nga Romans 'yung binabasa. Actually, binabasa nila 'yung introduction ni Martin Luther. You know, the guy I said a while ago about the Book of Romans. Because Martin Luther wrote this, "The Roman epistle is the chief book of the New Testament, the purest Gospel. It deserves not only to be known word-for-word by every Christian, it has to be known word-forword by every Christian, but to be the subject of his meditation, day by day, the daily bread of his soul. The more time one spends in it, the more precious it becomes and the better it appears." And because of that, no, John Wesley decided to join the Bible study, study Romans, and gave his life to the Lord Jesus Christ. I do hope, just like Wesley, Luther, Augustine, the Book of Romans will speak to your heart, and change your minds and lives. You know, in, in our relationship with the Lord, when we talk about the Lord, we have many questions, you know? For example, what is the good news? What is the Gospel? What is God like? Ano ba ang saint? What is a saint? Bakit may mga pupunta sa impyerno? Paano 'yung mga hindi nakadinig sa magandang balita? Why do people reject God and Christ? Bakit may false religion and idols? Ano ba talagang pinakamalaking kasalanan natin? Importante bang maging obedient kay God? Ano bang Espiritu Santo? Sino ba siya at anong ginagawa niya? Why is there suffering? Paano magdasal ng tama? What does predestination or election mean? Paano ba talaga maliligtas ang tao? What is the relationship of Christians to the world? To other Christians? To the unsaved? To the government? Friends, these questions that you are thinking about will be tackled in the Book of Romans. So are you excited? Excited ba kayo? So I hope po that you answered our quiz talking about questions. I did prepare three quiz questions sa inyo. Mind niyo po, the quiz is not to make you fail. It's really just to encourage you to read the topic beforehand. So next week po, alam niyo na po 'yung topic, basahin, this week basahin niyo na po 'yung idi-discuss natin para sa quiz po, masasagutan niyo po. At 'yung top na chapter po, meron pong special prize, no? Sa end of the book study. Okay? So quiz, no? Sinong nagsulat ng Romans? Anyone would like to answer sa chat? Meron ba? Sino nagsulat ng Romans? Hindi po Mills and Boone? Ayan, ang gagaling, si Paul daw. Very good. According, very good po. So please answer the quiz, ha? Sayang, kung, madali po 'yung quiz questions ko. Pagka-mataas po kayo, baka may special prize kayo at the end of the book study. Number two, according to Romans, the Gospel is, ano, A, B, C, D. Very good. Ang gagaling. Hindi na ata kailangan mag-book study nitong sila for Min, Si Ian, Willie de la Cruz. And number three, according to Romans 1, salvation is by A, B, C, D. Okay, very good po. I'm so blessed to see people whose theology is right. Pero, as we study the Book of Romans, I hope all of these truths will be clearer sa inyo po. You know, when I ask who wrote the Book of Romans, actually pwede ko kayong pilosopohin eh. Kasi sabi dito sa Romans 16:22, "Ay, Tertius, who have written this letter, greet you in the Lord." No, so ibig sabihin ba nun, si Tertius ang nagsulat ng Book of Romans, no? At alam niyo po, noong inaaral ko to, it, dito pala ata siguro nanggaling 'yung pangalan ni Tierso de Cruz, Tierso Cruz, no, the third? Ano ba 'yung pangalan na Tierso? So si Tertius pala 'yan. Now, Tertius is what we call an amanuensis. No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a great term for actually a secretary. Ang ibig sabihin niya is within hand's reach. So, I don't know, maybe Paul, lumalabo na 'yung tingin niya by that time. Wala namang atang salamin noong panahon na 'yun. So maybe um, mahina na rin ang kamay. So he had to have someone to write the letter for him, and that is Tertius, no? To better understand and better, better context on the Book of Romans, let's look into Rome in Paul's time. No, there was rampant immorality. Do you know that sexual immorality is so common during that time that out of the first 15 Roman emperors, 14 were practicing homosexuals, no? And that is why, as you can see, bakit sa, sa next chapter, there's a long discussion about homosexuality? I think Paul is really uh, digging into the truths that are happening in his time. During that time, no? Although there are a few rich people, Roman emperors are there, there's more than a million population in that small city of Rome, but mostly are slaves, no? And they had the big problem collecting taxes. You know, Rome uh, has a lot of religion to cover. Nahirapan po sila, kaya nga po sa panahon ni Jesus, diba? Tax collectors are needed to collect taxes in Israel. So they had a big problem collecting taxes. So I think that's one reason also why Paul had to talk to them on how we should relate to the government. And then during that time, no? Typical sinful practices are antisocial behavior, disobedient children, lawlessness, violence, and crime. And as you can see, when Paul talks about uh, the sins of that time, these are the sins that he would be discussing. You know, how was the Church of Rome started? Who started it, no? Actually, it was not started by an apostle. Most likely, it happened in Pentecost, in Acts 2:5 to 10. No, it says here, "There were staying in Jerusalem, God feeding Jews from every nation under heaven." And then they go on to mention Parthians, Medes, Mesopotamians, Judea. And lastly, visitors from Rome, both Jews and converts to Judaism. And all of these people, if you read the books of, uh, Book of Acts, around 3,000 people accepted Jesus as their Savior. And most likely, this Romans went back home and established the church. So actually, the Church of Rome was not established by apostolic guidance. Peter never set foot in Rome, no? No, during that time, the Emperor Cloudius, no, when the Church of Rome has already been established, that Emperor Cloudius was anti-Jewish. And he removed all the Jews from the city. Around 40,000 were expelled. When he died in AD 54, Emperor Nero, realizing Jews were good for business, invited them back, no? And when they invited them back, the Jews returned to the church, to the Christian church that they belong to. And they found out, aba, mga Gentiles na ang nagraran ng church. And actually, they were not made especially welcome. So this can explain why, pag binabasa niyo po 'yung Rome, paulit-ulit si Paul to the Jews first and then to the Gentiles because he wanted to explain the relationship of the Jews and the Gentiles who are suffering relationship problems during that time. Now this is just uh, the overview of the entire Book of Romans that we will go through as we study the book. No, God's righteousness is revealed through condemnation of all, and it talks about the immorality of man and such that the God's righteousness is required. And then after condemnation, we should first accept that we are condemned and we are sinners. Then, we are justified or saved. And Paul goes on to explain that salvation or justification is by grace and faith alone, and salvation is by Christ's work on the cross in God's grace alone. And hence, God's righteousness is not achieved, it is received. And then, when you have accepted Jesus as your Savior, you now become sanctified or ibig sabihin, the process of cleaning, removing the sinful nature in your heart and the death to the law, and then starting to walk in the Holy Spirit. And hence, God's righteousness is now reproduced. And then lastly, when we die, no? We have the glorification of believers and God's righteousness is fully realized. Paul goes on to talk about Israel and how God's righteousness was rejected. But ang ganda po ng discussion niya because he started first with the past of Israel, the present time, and then what the future holds for the nation of Israel. And lastly, Paul goes on to talk about more practical matters on how the church should relate with one another, the world, the brothers, evangelism, and to the Apostle himself. We divide the Book of Romans into two big portions, the statement of doctrine and the application of doctrine. And you know, when asked, "Ano ba ang central message ng Book of Romans?" It is Romans 1:16 to 17. So my friends, this is your memory verse for tonight. This verse should be planted in your hearts, no? Paul said, "I am not ashamed..." Can you speak it to me the same time? Sabay tayo, recite it. "I am not ashamed of the Gospel, for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jew first and also to the Greek. For in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith, as it is written, but the righteous man shall live by faith." And sa mga mahilig po sa Tagalog, I took time to give you the Tagalog verse as your memory verse. "Hindi ko po kinahihiya ang magandang palita, sapagkat ito ang kapangyarihan ng Diyos para sa kaligtasan ng bawat sumasampalataya, unay sa mga Hudyo at gayon din sa mga Grego. Sapagkat sa magandang balita ay pinapakita kung paano tinutuwid ng Diyos ang kaugnayan ng tao sa kanya. Ito ay sa pamamagitan ng pananampalataya buhat sa simula hanggang sa wakas. Ang itinuturing ng Diyos na matuwid sa pamamagitan ng pananampalataya ay mabubuhay." Ngayon ko lang po na-realize, ang ganda po ng ating wika. At sobra pong nabubuhay sa puso natin, oh? Pag binabasa pala natin itong verses sa wika natin. So let's start, no? Yeah, as I introduced, no? Let's meet the right... As I introduced, no? Let's meet the writer of the Book of Romans. And as you rightly answered, it was written by Paul. And Paul introduced himself three ways. He said, "I am a bond servant. I am called as an apostle, and I am set apart for the gospel of God." No, sa Tagalog po, ang ganda rin pakinggan, lingkod ni Jesus. Tinawag para maging apostol. Hinirang, kailan niyo pa ba nagagamit 'yung salitang hinirang? Sa lupang hinirang na lang. Hinirang upang mangaral ng magandang balita. Friends, Paul describes himself in his relationship to the Lord Jesus Christ. He used the word bond servant. You know, in Hebrews, they start as slaves. But then when they fall in love with their master, and they decide, "Master, you are a good master. I want to be part of your life, therefore, I am willing to be your bond servant." So after seven years that he's a slave, he becomes a bond servant, and he starts to become part of the family. And that's what Paul is saying when he said, "I'm a bond servant of Christ Jesus." No, let's look. How did Paul live his life as a bond servant? Ito po, 'yung missionary journey ni Paul, 'yung tatlong missionary journey niya throughout his life, no, as an apostle of Christ. Do you know, pag binilang po nating ilang kilometro ang nilakad ni Paul, he walked sixteen thousand kilometers. Walking, wala namang pong kotse nun eh, walang motor, walang bisikleta. Sixteen thousand kilometers of walking. And do you know, if you look at it sa enlex? No, it's like walking back and forth, enlex, pabalik, one hundred times. Would you do that for the Lord? Will you do that, sharing the gospel? Eh, 'yung kapitbahay nga lang, hindi ahirapan tayong mag-share ng gospel, but that's what Paul did. He deserved to be called an apostle and a bond servant of the Lord. You know, these are all the things that Paul did in his missionary journey. And as you can see, the letter of Romans was written around fifty-four to fifty-seven AD. It was after he was in Corinth. And that is why we believe that Paul wrote the letter to Romans during his third missionary journey while he was in Corinth. You know why? Kasi sa Romans sixteen one two, Paul introduced to us a beautiful lady na part ng church sa Corinth. And her name is Phoebe. So best, nandyan ka ba, Phoebes? Dito pala nanggaling 'yung pangalan mo. "I recommend to you our sister Phoebe, who is a servant of the church in Senkrea." And Senkrea is in the port of Corinth, that you receive her in the Lord in a manner worthy of the saints. So Paul is saying, 'yung may hawak ng sulat si Phoebe, galing siya sa Senkrea, i-welcome niyo siya. Because she is also a saint, no, for all of you. So, 'yung nga, sa Tagalog, si Phoebe pala 'yan. So, looking into the first na, sa two verses palang tayo, pasensya na po ha, dami kasing magandang matutunan sa Romans. Paul goes on to say, no, that he was set apart for the gospel of God, which was promised in the Old Testament through the prophets. Grabe no, 'yung good news ng God for our salvation was present even in Genesis, no? So, ano ba, bakit nagumpisa si Paul in the first part of his letter about the gospel of God? Let me introduce to you kasi evangelion. The evangelion is a Greek term, meaning good news, good news messenger, no, evangelion. Ito po kasi ay ginagamit ng mga Romans nung panahon na 'yun to share good news tungkol sa emperador. Halimbawa po, hindi po emperador brandy ha, 'yung kanilang emperor. Halimbawa po, magandang balita, pinanganak na po ang anak ng ating emperor. Meron na po tayong susunod sa yapak ng ating emperor. 'Yun po ang evangelion. And Paul is starting to say to the Romans, "You have heard many evangelions." That's where we got the word evangelism, no? "But I have something better, no? I have a gospel of God, an evangelion of God, magandang balita tungkol kay Jesus." So he's relating what's happening in Rome, what people used to talk about during those times into the gospel of God. And what is the good news all about? Kung 'yung evangelion talks about the birth of the son of the emperor, Paul is also talking here about the birth of God's son, no? And in Romans one three to four, he goes on to say, "He was born a descendant of David according to the flesh, declared the son of God with power according to the spirit of holiness by the resurrection from the dead, Jesus Christ our Lord." So Paul is talking about another son, this time not a son of an emperor, but the son of our Almighty God. Alam niyo po, ang ganda po ng rendering sa Tagalog eh, kasi mas malinaw po. Sabi sa Tagalog ito, tungkol sa kanyang pagiging tao, pinanganak siya sa linya ni David. No, he had to be under David's line, to be a king, no? Pero subalit, tungkol sa kanyang pagka-Diyos. Ah, 'yun ang maganda sa sinasabi ni Paul. He is telling us, "Christ was born a man in the flesh, as a descendant of David. But in his resurrection, he declared that he is God." Ang ganda po. And that's one thing that we have to realize, that the Lord Jesus Christ that we worship came here as a man. He understands all the sufferings that we're going through. And yet, through his resurrection, he established his divinity, his deity as God, and thus we can worship. And what best God to worship but a God who understands everything that we're going through, because he was once a man. So let's go on with Romans. Through Christ, Paul goes on to say, "God has given us the privilege and authority as apostles to tell Gentiles everywhere what God has done for them, so that they will believe, obey, and bring glory to his name." Brothers and sisters, pag tinanong ko kayo, why do you share the gospel? Why should you share the gospel? Alam niyo, marami siguro sa sagot natin, kasi mahal ko 'yung pamilya ko, gusto ko silang ma-save. Kasi 'yan po 'yung inutos ni Jesus sa amin, kasi 'yan po 'yung sinabi ni Pastor Peter, "Go and make disciples." Pero alam niyo po, one of the most important reason, and I think it should be the primary reason, why we share the gospel, why we tell everyone what God has done on the cross is to bring him glory. Kung 'yun po ang dahilan, kaya gusto niyo pong i-share ang gospel, I'm sure you will find it in your heart to share the gospel. Because you want to bring people who will bow their knees to the Lord, because they believe and they will obey, and they will bring glory. Napakaganda po, napaka-simpling statement. No, but the gospel is purely stated here, that our salvation is not by anything that we do, but everything that God has done. And the only thing that we need to do is to believe and to obey. And in believing and obeying, we give God all the glory. You know, I'd just like to state this, that when Paul had to say, "I am an apostle," he had to state the fact. Na, "I am in..." Patas lang kami ni Peter, patas. In Galatians two eight, he goes on further to say, "The same God who worked through Peter as the apostle to the Jews also worked through me as the apostle to the Gentiles." So Paul is telling here, as he wrote to the Romans as well, "I am admonishing you, I am administering to you, because I am an apostle to you. God has given me the specific task to share the gospel to the Gentiles, the same way that Peter was tasked to share the gospel to the Jews." And then Paul ends his beginning of the letter, as you can see, ang haba po magsulat ni Paul, no? This is just the ending of the beginning. "To all who are beloved of God in Rome, called as saints. Grace to you and peace from God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ." You know, when Paul described himself, do you remember how he described himself? Bond servant, called, and sanctified. You know, and Paul also describes the people in the Church of Rome three ways, beloved of God, called, and saints. Sa Tagalog, minahal ng Diyos, tinawag upang maging banal. So saints is sa Tagalog ginamit ay banal. So, ang tanong, what did Paul mean when he say, "I'm writing this letter to the saints of Rome?" You know, let us define now what is a saint, no? As sinabi po dito, being a saint is being called, no? Para maging banal, you have to start first with the love of God. And once you have the love of God in your heart, and you have this relationship with him, you will be effectively called to be part of his family. And in that calling, you will become banal, holy, sanctified, or saints. That's where we got the word saint, no, from the word sanctified. To clarify this better, let's look at another letter. Paul wrote to the Corinthians, and this is the way he told, he started his letter, "To the church of God that is in Corinth, to those sanctified in Christ Jesus, called to be saints, together with all those who in every place call upon the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, both their Lord and ours." So therefore, can I clarify this? What are saints? Saints are people who are sanctified by Jesus. Saints are people who call upon the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Do you call upon the name of the Lord Jesus Christ? Do you call him Lord? Therefore, you are a saint. No, a saint is someone that is sanctified, chosen by God to be part of the family. If you have accepted Jesus as your Lord and Savior friend, you are a saint. Okay? Let's go on. Romans one eight to nine, so this is the first thing that Paul had to say. First, I thank God through Jesus Christ for all of you, because your faith is being reported all over the world, of course. All roads lead to Rome, diba? So all the faithful in Rome, I'm sure all the things that happening there is being talked about throughout the entire known world during that time. "God whom I serve in my spirit in preaching the gospel of his son is my witness, how constantly I remember you." You know, why is Paul saying this? He's never been to Rome. He's never met the Church of Rome. He's never been there. None of the apostles have been there. So he had to tell them how much he still feels for this church. "Now, as God is my witness, I have never forgotten you, I have always remembered you." And that's why he said, "One of the things I always pray for when I pray is the opportunity to come at last to see you." It's never, as I said, he's never been to Rome, Peter has never been to Rome. And in Romans fifteen, he says this, "I'm planning to go to Spain, and when I do, I will stop off in Rome. After I have enjoyed your fellowship for a little while, you can provide for my journey." So actually, Paul wanted to go to the Church of Rome to fellowship with them, but also to ask for help, maybe financial help, for his further missionary journey work. Okay, why Spain, no? Let's go back to the map I shared to you a while ago. So this is the map of Paul's missionary journey. And this is the modern map that we have. Okay, so this is where Paul had been sharing the gospel. Can you imagine that? From Yugoslavia, Albania, Greece, Turkey, Syria, Cyprus, Lebanon, and Israel, Apostle Paul has been sharing the gospel. So where else will he go? He had to go to Italy, to Rome. And from Rome, he had to go to Spain, so he can share the gospel to the Western world. Let's go ahead, no, with Romans one, verse ten to thirteen. So Paul said, "First of all, I pray that I come to see you." But he also had three things in his heart he would like to do with the Church of Rome. Number one, he said, "I want to bring you spiritual gift that will help you grow strong in the Lord." Number two, "I want to encourage your faith, but I also want to be encouraged by yours." Grabe si Paul, no, 'yung humility niya, na, "I will encourage you, but you will also encourage me." And he said, "Thirdly, to see spiritual fruit." Now, when I was reading, what does he mean when he said spiritual fruit? Ang ganda sa Tagalog eh. Sabi sa Tagalog, nais ko ring makahikayat dyan ng mga mananampalataya kay Kristo. So therefore, he wanted, again, anong gusto nasa heart ni Paul? "I want to share the gospel so that I can bring people to bow their knees to the Lord Jesus Christ." That's the spiritual fruit he was aiming for. He said, "I planned many times to visit you, but I was prevented until now." Ngayon, church, can I ask you, was there a time in your life na may pinaplano ka pero hindi ka pinayagan ni Lord? But in the end, naintindihan mo kung bakit? I don't know what you're going through right now, sa panahon ng COVID. Baka may plano sa inyo mag-abroad, pero dahil nagka-pandemic, hindi natuloy. No, baka may plano kayo magpakasal, pero dahil sa pandemic, hindi natuloy. No, many times, no, the plans that we have will be prevented by the Lord. But look at this, ha? Let me open your eyes to this. In the process of Paul writing the letter to the Romans, because he cannot come, he wrote the letter. Paul produces Christianity's first theology textbook, one that many Bible experts say is history's most concise elocuent statement of the Christian faith. Even today, many Bible experts say that the best introduction to Christianity is to read somebody else's mail, and that is Paul's letter to the Romans. Paul goes on to say, "I am under obligation, obligasyon ko po ito, both Greeks and barbarians, wise and foolish, to preach the gospel in Rome." You know, God did allow Paul to come to Rome, but not as he planned. He came there as a prisoner. Pero tingnan niyo po 'yung heart ni Paul. Sabi niya sa Philippians, because the letter to the Philippians was written while he was in jail. "I want you to know, brothers and sisters, that what has happened to me actually served to advance the gospel. As a result, it became clear throughout the whole palace guard, and to everyone else, that I am in chains for Jesus." Imagine mo kung ikaw ang nakatali kay Paul, kasi nung panahon po, may gwardya po na nakatali kasama si Paul. Imagine mo kung ikaw 'yung gwardya ni Paul, siguro oras-oras, sinecermonan ka niya about the Lord Jesus Christ. And ilang gwardya po ang napunta kay Paul. You know what happened? You know how God had blessed Paul, his heart, despite it was not his plan, but God's plan that he be in prison? Sabi niya, "All the saints greet you," again, saints. May saints pala sa Caesar's household. He was able to share the gospel even to Caesar's household. And people there received the Lord Jesus Christ as their Savior, and they were all saints. As I wind up my talk, we'll go talk about our memory verse. No, Paul goes on to say these things. And you know, it is in these verses that we see the three reasons why the gospel, the letter of Rome was written by Apostle Paul. Number one, no, he wanted to clarify the gospel. No, the gospel says is the power. No, the word power comes from the word dynamo, where we get the word dynamite from. This is the kind of dynamite power that the gospel has, and he wanted to clarify it to the Church of Rome. Because as I said, there was no apostolic presence when it was started. Number two, as I mentioned a while ago, may kaunting rivalry between the Jews that came back when they were exiled and the Gentiles that were remaining in the church, who was running the church when they came. And he wanted to unify the church. And the third reason why Paul wrote this letter is to reveal God's righteousness. Friends, when you look at this first, as I end my talk, I want you to remember, as we study this Book of Romans, the first introduction, I want you to remember four words, power, salvation, righteousness, and faith. These four words, my friends, is what the gospel is all about. See, God has the power. He has the power to create. He has the power to create, create this beautiful world, create the internet, create us. He has the power to love. The only way that the best love could be given. He has the power to forgive. He has the power to judge. He has the power to punish, to rebuke. He has the power to save and to give life. And my friends, this is the gospel power of salvation. To be saved from sin, from death, from hopelessness, from meaninglessness in this life, and to save you from hell. Now, the power of law of God to save us is only through the righteousness of God. And the righteousness of God can only be achieved through Jesus Christ alone. And once we have accepted Jesus as our Savior, we shall now start to live by faith from beginning to end of our Christian life, by believing alone in Christ, but not stopping there, not having dead faith, but having true faith by showing obedience to a powerful God we serve. And my friends, this powerful gospel that we will study in the book of Romans is centered only in one thing, and that is the cross. If you are here for the first time, if you haven't had any relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ, or you've been a Christian for a long time, but this is the first time that you'll be reading Romans from the heart, or you've been a strong Christian, and you read Romans, and you want to grow more and to be more obedient, now is the time. God allowed this pandemic for us to have time to meet. God allowed internet to be present so that we can meet. And this is not an accident that you are here with us tonight. And as I close, I'd like to pray for you. God oh Father, Lord, our hearts are so blessed that we can study the book of Romans. Thank you Lord for the heart of Paul, and that you have used him mightily Father, for the sharing and the teaching of the gospel. Lord Father, I pray for each and everyone here with us tonight, that Lord, may the Holy Spirit speak to their hearts. If you are here for the first time, if you have no relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ yet, or you haven't accepted this gospel into your heart and into your life, let me guide you by praying this prayer. Lord Jesus, I realize I am condemned. I am not righteous, and I cannot be righteous as you. I am a sinner Lord, and I repent from my sins, and I confess them Lord, that anything that I do, I can never earn my way to heaven. But Lord, thank you for your Son. Your Son who came as a man, but who went back and resurrected. And now is God seated at your right throne. Thank you for our Lord and Savior, and we accept you Jesus, we accept what you offer, the salvation that you offer Lord, the righteousness that only you can give us Father. We accept it in our hearts. And Lord Jesus Christ, as you come into my life, I would like to obey you this time, not to earn my salvation, but this time to obey you, because I love you. Lord, I pray for the church. I pray Lord that we will commit to be with, together every Wednesday and be blessed by the book of Romans. All honor and glory and praise to you, O God. In the name of your mighty Son, our Lord and our King, we pray. Amen. So, maraming salamat po, ang tatahimik ninyo, kasi naka-muyot kayo. As I end my talk po, I'd just like to give you advice, three things po. Number one, commit to God to join us every Wednesday and read the book of Romans daily from your Bible, not from your cell phone. Buy a Bible kung wala pa po kayo. August, read chapter one to two, every day paulit-ulit. September, read chapters three to six, every day paulit-ulit. October, chapter seven to nine, November, chapter ten to thirteen, December, chapter fourteen to sixteen. And I guarantee you, by December, memorialize ninyo na po ang Romans, no? And uh, it will really be planted in your mind and in your hearts. Number two, whenever you read your Bible, whenever you attend our, our book study, pray for the Holy Spirit to open and guide your mind and heart as you study this great letter. And number three, I am excited, my brothers and sisters, to see Jesus and the gospel transform your life. Thank you. Alright, let's all come to God in prayer. Again, maraming po salamat, Doc June, sa inyong time. At uh, we'll see you again next week, Doc June. Kayo din po, di ba po ba?
Oo nga eh.
Opo, ayun. Pero may ibat-iba-bot tayong speaker, at ito po ay uh, to be announced. So uh, patapusin po natin, unti-unti po, kasi maganda pong hinihima 'yung uh, book of Romans or studyo ng book of Romans para po mas maintindihan natin. Let's bow our head and close our eyes. Let's come to God in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're so thankful Lord, once again, for this opportunity Lord God, to go deep in your Word. Thank you for the conviction Lord God, that you've given to each and every one of us in the study of Romans, Lord God. 'Yung ilang mga bagay na napag-aralan namin gabi Lord God, convicted us of something, Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you so much Lord God. May this conviction, Lord God, be on fire, Lord God, to know you more, to deepen our knowledge with you. Lord, tulungan mo kami Panginoon. Tulog kami to understand more and to crave more of your Word, Lord Jesus Christ, in our lives. Lord, help us, Lord Jesus Christ. Salamat po Panginoon din sa conviction mo sa aming leader, ang aming Doc June, na pag-aralan nayang Panginoon itong Romans, Lord Jesus Christ, because this will definitely change lives. Salamat po Panginoon.
Yes Father.
And going into detail Panginoon is something that we must do Lord God, to go deep in your Word. Lord, help us Father God, to be diligent in attending, Lord God, this class, that we will not just start well, Lord God, but we will finish well, Lord Jesus. That we will commit to finish studying this book, Lord. Help us Father God. It is only by the might and the power of the Holy Spirit that we can do this.
Yes Lord.
Help us Lord, help us. We also remember Lord God, 'yung aming mga kapatiran is Afghanistan. They're going through such a tough times Father God, difficult times. I pray Lord God for your comfort, Lord God. May the comfort of your Word and your promises, Lord God, yet work in their lives, Lord God. So 'yung kanilang mga dinadanas and difficulties Panginoon, ay uh, hindi ganun ka bigat, Lord Jesus Christ.
Yes Lord.
Lord, we're so thankful Panginoon, because we're not going through doon sa mga ganung klaseng difficulties in life, Lord God.
Yes Father.
At malaya pa nga kami Panginoon na kapag book study. Nung mga Panginoon, we will take this opportunity and not waste, Lord God, this opportunity to learn more of you, to go deep, Lord God, in the knowledge of you, Lord God. The knowledge and the power of the gospel in our lives, Lord Jesus. We will not take advantage, Panginoon, we will not waste our time, Father God, doon sa mga bagay na hindi naman dapat namin bigyan ng halaga or bigyan ng so much time. Help us to prioritize you over all things, Lord Jesus. Lord, ingatan mo Panginoon about isa. Lord, we're going, some of us, Lord, are going through tough times as well. Panginoon, may you, Lord Jesus Christ, give us comfort through your Word. Ingatan mo rin Panginoon, ang mga leaders, ang mga COS, Panginoon.
Yes Lord.
Ang aming Doc June, Panginoon, sa kanyang pakikipagniig sa araw-araw, na exposure, Panginoon, sa mga pasyente sa ospital, kanyang pagdabiyahe. Ingatan mo siya Panginoon, that his life will be glorifying to you, Lord God, in many ways. Lord, it's easier than done, Lord God, dahil siya po ay isang doktor, and he's encountering a lot of things in his life. May you also protect, Lord God, his family, Lord God. May he manage his time well, Lord Jesus Christ. Lord, take good care of him and his family. Remember, Lord Jesus Christ, sa aming mga COS, ingatan mo rin po Panginoon, ang aming mga members, Lord Jesus, sa aming mga senior citizen, Lord God, ay mga youth, young people, Lord, singles, and even our next gen, Lord. Please, Lord God, bless our families, protect each and every one of us, Lord God, and help us, Father God, to uh, be diligent, Lord God, in studying your Word, in praying and communicating with you, Lord God, in touching base with one another, Lord God, through the group. Lord, be with us, Lord. Lord, we give you all the glory, all the praise and honor, Lord Jesus Christ, sa mga ginagawa mo sa amin. And this is our prayer, in your name, Lord Jesus, and everyone will say.
Amen, amen.
Magandang gabi po, sa inyong lahat.